All right, good evening, everyone. And welcome to our organizational meeting for this 2019 school year. Organizational meeting of the board. This is the one and only time during the school year that I actually get to preside over this meeting. And I'm sort of debating whether I should... Oh, I'm just kidding. Anyway, I really appreciate you all being here tonight. I'd like to start by calling this meeting to order and ask that Ms. Goodell do roll, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Castillo?
Here.
Ms. Gill?
Here.
Ms. Litten?
Here.
Mr. Reitinger?
Here.
Ms. Russell?
Here.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we'll all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all very much. Can I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the agenda has been adopted. Our first order of business this evening is to elect a new chair for the coming year. And it's my honor and privilege to be part of that and sort of facilitating that process. So at this point in time, I would ask if there are any nominees or nominations that would like to come forward for chair. Now would be the time to please nominate someone. Mr. Webb?
Mr. Chair, I would like to put name into nomination of Aaron Gill for the school board chair for this upcoming year.
Aaron Gill has been nominated. Is there a second?
A second.
Seceded by Sean Russell. Thank you very much. Are there any other names for consideration as chair for board? Seeing none, there is one name who's been put in for nomination as the chair of the board, and that is Aaron Gill. So at this point, we will take a roll call vote. An up vote is a yes, and a down vote is a no. Ms. Goodell, would you please call the roll?
Greg Anderson?
Yes.
Justin Castillo?
Aye.
Aaron Gill?
Aye.
Shannon Litten?
Aye.
Phil Reitinger?
Yes.
Shawna Russell?
Yes.
And Lawrence Webb?
Yes.
Thank you.
And with unanimous acceptance, Ms. Gill, I will happily hand you over the meeting and your new placard of chair. And we will get a new one that will say chair as opposed to chairman. But for now, this will be the gender-neutral chairman nameplate. And I will also turn the meeting over to you. Congratulations, and thank you very much for stepping up into leadership.
Thank you very much, Dr. Noonan. All right, I know we have a long agenda tonight, so I will just go forth with the election of the vice chair. Does anyone have a nomination for vice chair? Mr. Reitinger?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I would like to nominate Mr. Greg Anderson. He's been on the board for only a year, but Greg during the time has shown himself extremely committed to the schools. He's attended not only school board meetings, but city council meetings, and been deeply involved in the activities of the board. And therefore, I'd like to nominate him to be the vice chair of the board. Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Ms. Goodell, would you call the roll?
Yes. Greg Anderson?
Yes.
Justin Castillo?
Right.
Aaron Gill?
Aye.
Shannon Litten?
Aye.
Phil Reitinger?
Yes.
Shawna Russell?
Yes.
And Lawrence Webb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to... Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Would you like to say anything?
Thank you, and I'm looking forward to a good year with us to do a lot of things.
I want to change places. Would you like to stay where you are?
Um, I can stay where I am. Yeah. All right. Moving on to item 2.03 in the agenda, setting the date, time, and place of regular school board meetings. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Litten. Ms. Goodell, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Castillo.
I'm sorry, pardon. I have no other information.
Actual setting the date, time, and place.
Yes, thank you.
And I will move that the school board establish a schedule of regular meetings on the second Tuesday of each month, beginning at 7:00 PM, in the central office conference room, sorry, during the period of renovation of council chambers at City Hall and at the city council chambers thereafter, and to establish a schedule of work sessions on the third Tuesday of each month, beginning at 7:00 PM, at the central office conference room, Falls Church City of the Schools.
Great, thank you, Mr. Castillo. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, great. Okay, moving on... Sorry, I apologize to the people in the audience, I don't have a lot of information. So if I have to repeat something because we don't have to take a roll call, apologies. Moving on to section two...
We do, okay.
I thought you said we don't need to...
We need a vote.
Okay, great. Okay, could... Ms. Goodell, could you please take the vote?
All in favor?
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Great, thanks. Moving on to 2.04, appointment of the school board clerk. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the school board appoint Martha Goodell of the school board beginning... For the school board clerk, beginning January 8th, 2019.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on to section 2.05, resolution authorizing the school board officials to sign warrants. Do we have a motion? I think so.
Do you have to say I move?
Yes.
Okay. I move, be it resolved that under provision of section 22.1-122B of the Code of Virginia as amended, Peter Noonan, superintendent, is appointed agent, and Kristen Michael, chief operating officer, is appointed deputy agent to examine and approve claims and to sign warrants for the payment thereof. Be it further resolved that the agent and deputy agent shall furnish a surety bond conditioned upon the faithful performance and discharge of the duties assigned to each such official under section 22.1-122B in the amount of $100,000, and the premium thereafter shall be paid out of school board funds.
Thank you, Ms. Litten. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, section 2.06, approving the designee to attend school board meeting in the absence of the superintendent. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the school board designate Chief Academic Officer Lisa High to attend the school board meetings in the absence of the superintendent, effective through December 31st, 2019.
Thank you. Mr. Reitinger, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, section 2.07, approval and adoption of the 2019 School Board Code of Civility. Do we have a motion?
I move that the school board approve the adoption of the 2019 School Board Code of Civility as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. All right, we will now move on to section three, the spotlight on Team FCCPS. And tonight, we are going to talk about GMHS students and their community service. Dr. Noonan?
Yes, thank you, Chair Gill. Good evening. Tonight, we are... We have a great opportunity to talk about, in our spotlight, two of the longest-running charitable events that happen here in FCCPS. And those are, first, the blood drive that we do at George Mason High School, and also the meals for the homeless at the Falls Church Homeless Shelter. And joining us tonight to talk a little bit about that are Courtney Waddles and Julie Connolly. And I'd like to invite them up to the table if they're here. There they are. And as they come up, we'll go ahead and roll the videos, and they'll be here to answer any questions you might have.
I've been the senior class advisor for about nine years now. One of the big activities we do to give back to the community is the blood drive. We've been doing the blood drive as long as I've been working here, so I would say it's at least been 18 years that I know it's been going on. The seniors each year set it up in the fall. We do one blood drive. We get anywhere from 50 to 100 students that are over 16. So it's not just for the seniors, but the seniors run the blood drive. So I'm one of the senior class co-sponsors here. As part of that job, we facilitate this homeless shelter where the students, once a week from November through February, make a meal for the Falls Church Winter Homeless Shelter. Each week, a faculty member works or two, works with the students. They're given $100 to go to Giant and purchase the groceries. They decide on a menu together with the teacher and the students. That money comes from the senior class funds, which are mostly from the homecoming dance. Even though it's a small town, there are people who do not have nice houses and do not have a lot of money. And to sort of... To see that side of things in Falls Church kind of reflects on the bigger world, and I think it's nice for kids to see that right here, even at Falls Church, they can help.
I've made macaroni and cheese and peanut butter and jelly before, but I've never really made a whole meal, and I've never grilled. So it was really interesting to learn how to do that. As we go off into college and get older, we have to learn how to give back to the community and not just do things for ourselves. It's really important to help other people along the way and not just do things because it's good for you.
Living in Falls Church, this community has given us a lot over the last 12 years plus. And so I think it's nice for us to give back, because we're getting ready to head off to college, do other things. I think it's a nice way to kind of end our education in Falls Church and give back to the community.
I think it's just good to give back to your community, and that's all Falls Church is about, because it's the little city, and we all want to give back to the city.
It's important to give back, and when we have the opportunity to do something like this, we should just do it.
If you didn't notice, Courtney is our SCA president, and Julie is the vice president. And I'm sure would welcome any questions that you might have. But first of all, thank you very much for your incredible work putting all that together. Nice job.
Great, does anyone have any questions or anything you'd like to ask? Well, thank you so much for coming, and thank you for all the great work you're doing for our community.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to section 4.01, recognition of Fall Champions of Character Award. Dr. Noonan?
Thank you. I'm going to invite Julie Braven up, who's going to take it from here. But tonight is another opportunity for us to recognize our champions of character. We do this routinely through the year, and I'll let you talk a little bit about it. Make sure you turn your mic on.
Thank you for welcoming our fall athletes. They represent each team. They were chosen by their coach to be the champion of character, which is the athlete that represents the most integrity, respect, sportsmanship, and leadership. And I think they're going to come up, introduce themselves, and give you just a brief summary of the outstanding things that has happened this year with their teams.
Hello, I'm Dani. I'm part of the cross-country team, and I love my team. Everyone is very friendly. But a highlight of the season is that we made it to states for the 20th time in a row. We had seven girls go to states, and a runner that made it to top 25.
My name is Jack Felgar, and I'm here on behalf of the George Mason Football Team. First off, I just want to say thank you for having us, and thank you for your service that you guys provide to the community. I really appreciate all the school board does for all of our students and schools. Short summary of our season, it was not the most successful season we have had, especially compared to last year, in which we made the playoffs. We went 2-7 this year. One of our games was canceled against Sidwell Friends because of the hurricane. But despite our record, I would never consider our season unsuccessful, because this year we had an incredible freshman and sophomore class, the biggest freshman and sophomore classes to ever come through our varsity program. Because our program is so small, we have so many young kids that are pulled up to varsity, and those kids really inspired me this year. And despite our record, I've never seen a team work so hard throughout the entire season. As some of you guys know, it's really easy to come to practice with a lot of energy and spirit in September and August, when practice is starting and you're going through your first scrimmage and games. But when it comes through October and the weather's getting cold, and your season might not be as successful as it was in the past years, it's not very easy to show up to practice with a good attitude and a lot of spirit every single day. And I think that our team did a great job of that this year, so I'm really proud of our team for that. So thank you for the time.
Hi, I'm Jasper Litten. I'm here on behalf of the golf team. First, I'd just like to say thank you for having us, and thank you for what you all do for us. It's much appreciated. This year, the golf team, we didn't have a great record. We went 2-9, but that's okay, because the golf team this year, we had a ton of new people come out for the golf team, more than any year I've been on the golf team in the past. And we were able to work in a lot of these new players into the matches and to get them playing some real golf for the first time ever. And so it was a great season for the golf team, and I'm really proud of the team. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Reyes Ramirez. I'm here on behalf of the cheerleading team. Our season was a great season. We started off at a UCA camp, which we've been going to for two years. We did great. We had so much fun. We topped three for large varsity, and it was totally great. We also, after 10 years, this was our first year going into cheer competitions, and it was really hard at first, because we've been going to competitions where other schools have been doing competitions for years and years. So it was tough for us at first, but we topped three at a competition, so that was really great for us. We love cheering at football games, homes in a way, and we love doing competitions. So it was a great season for us. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Megan Boson, and I'd like to thank you guys. Like Jasper and Jack said earlier, thank you for everything you do. I'm here on behalf of the volleyball team. And so we came into the season with not a lot of expectations for success, but we were very excited for the season to come, because we had eight sophomores on a 14-person varsity team, and new coaches, and it just was all unexpected. And our coaches did amazing work with our team, and everybody put in so much work and stayed after practice and worked while we were at practice. In every game, we tried to stay positive and play our best, and we ended up going farther than we've ever gone. And we went to state quarterfinals, and we were district champs. So it ended up being a pretty good season, which nobody really expected, so that was just really positive for all of us. And I love every girl on my team, and our coaches were great, and we're all pumped for next season.
Hello, I'm Katie Deal. I'm for the... Here for the field hockey team. We also had a really young and small team this year, and we had a change of the head coach, but we all had a lot of fun. It wasn't particularly successful, particularly successful, but it was fun, and we bonded a lot, especially with the younger girls. Thank you.
Can you guys hear me? Let's see if I can just adjust it a little bit more. So I'm Eric Donnelly, and I'm with the boys' cross-country team. And just to start off, this year, we had... This was the boys' team's third year in a row of making it to states. We had 20 runners who made the states, or excuse me, seven runners who made the states, and one of whom made it into the top 20. And the season was very... It was good. Part of the difficulty of running cross-country is kind of... Is the mental part of it. You have to kind of overcome the... Your mind has to overcome what your body's trying to tell it to do. And that's... It's one of the reasons why I love cross-country. I love running cross-country. So the season was great, so thank you.
Can we get a picture? All right.
Stay right where you're at, and I won't have the athletes come over here. Stand up. Stay right there. That's right. If you're sitting here, you're not...
Get out of the screen.
Mr. Mason, do we have hazard pay?
Not for your certain action.
There's a carve-out for standing chairs.
There we go. I can't get you. One, two, three, okay. See the morning?
Thank you all so much, and congratulations. Moving on to section 5.01, for public comments and requests. In accordance with School Board Bylaw 2.30, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to board members and for the record. I don't have any slips. Does anyone... Would anyone like to make a public comment? Seeing none, we will move on. Next on the agenda, section 6.01, we have a closed meeting. Would someone like to read us into closed?
Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose, to discuss or consider the identified subject matter: personnel under section 2.2-3711A1, in particular, staff appointments, staff reassignments, staff resignations, staff retirements, staff performance, staff change in position, childcare leave, long-term medical leave, leave-of-absence, and advisory committee appointments and resignations, and student matters under section 2.2-3711A2, in particular, non-resident tuition student.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Ms. Goodell, would you please call the roll?
Madam Chair, could I request that we amend that request to include real estate matters as well?
Yes, of course. Is that... Do we have a... Do we need to get a second for that amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I second the amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
I second the amendment that we include real estate property matters.
Where such matters would adversely affect the bargaining position.
Yep. Not the real property one, but I think...
Disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Do we have a second for the amended motion?
I second the amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Ms. Goodell?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
Aye.
Ms. Gill?
Aye.
Ms. Litten?
Aye.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Dr. Noonan, do we have an idea of how long we may be?
I was going to say about a minute, but there's been an additional piece to it, so maybe 10 minutes.
Okay, so 10 minutes. We'll talk. Thank you. All right, would someone like to read us back into open, or certify the closed meeting? Reconvene the... Sorry, my computer is still frozen. Thanks.
Madam Chair, move that the board reconvene to open meeting.
So I can...
Thank you. Does someone please certify the closed meeting? Sorry, do we have to do a vote?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
Aye.
Ms. Gill?
Aye.
Ms. Litten?
Aye.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goodell. Would someone please certify the closed meeting?
Madam Chair, whereas the Falls Church City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such meeting... Such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies; and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reitinger. Ms. Goodell?
Yes. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
Right.
Ms. Gill?
Aye.
Ms. Litten?
Aye.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to section 8.01, approval of the consent agenda. I would ask that we approve the consent agenda unless we see any objections. Seeing none, it is approved. Moving on to section nine, 9.01, the superintendent's proposed FY '20 budget. Dr. Noonan?
Good evening. Thank you very much. I'm going to present from up here, if that's all right, this evening, just so that we all have a good chance to see what is being presented. So with that, good evening, Chair Gill and Vice Chair Anderson, members of the board, staff, community, our SAO friends, our CIC representatives, and our PEAC representatives. Thank you all very much for being here. It is my pleasure, this time of the year, every year, to present the budget, superintendent's budget, for the school board's consideration. Over the past couple of months, we've worked very diligently to craft a budget that reflects the priorities of our school system, is responsive to our collective needs now and into the future, and that will ultimately be in sync with what we have become... What has become affectionately known as the FCCPS placemat, as well as our triennial plan. These have become the drivers by which our school and our school system is working towards, and in many ways has become our north star in our decision-making and where we put our resources. The priorities that we've identified in our triennial plan are student-centered teaching and learning, ensuring that we have excellent staff, having optimal facilities and excellent learning environments, great fiscal management, and strong community engagement. As you are all keenly aware, in any budget process, there are more requests than there often is money that's available. And as a consequence, competing interests need to be weighed against these priorities, and hard decisions need to be made. In December, the city councils approved budget guidance of 2% or organic growth was presented to us. And this means for the city of Falls Church Schools, an $844,000 starting point. This year, our focus is on compensation. It's on compensation, recruitment, and retention of teachers and staff, given the competitive nature of Northern Virginia. We are committed to showing our employees how much they are valued by us as the leaders of the school division, and also valued by the community. Our human capital in the City of Falls Church Public Schools is vital to the health of our organization, our system, and as a consequence of that, we must provide fair and competitive wages. For that reason, the centerpiece of this year's proposed budget is staff compensation, which includes a step increase for all eligible employees, plus a 1% cost of living adjustment for all employees. Also, because of the shortage of substitute teachers and our difficulty in finding them, I'll be seeking a $2 per hour increase for both short and long-term substitutes in hopes of retaining more in our substitute ranks. In sum total, when you include everything in our proposed budget, my recommendation with employee compensation package results in a net of $1.7 million. That's a little more than twice what the city council's guidance was that was given to us in December. In the coming year, we're projecting growth at just under 1%. This provides us with an excellent opportunity to continue to realign our programming and realize greater efficiencies within FCCPS positions and our logistical work. With the realignment of approximately five positions through attrition and across, and from across the division, we're projecting a savings and coupled with annual savings for salary turnover, a reduction of post-employment benefits and savings from a transitional retirement program, I'm pleased to say that our budget can be balanced and was, will be within the 2% guidance from the city council. Every line item, in addition to that, in our budget for 2020 is tied directly to the triennial plan and supports the work of our human capital and all-meaning-all philosophy, and our work to become the premier pre-K-12 IB division in the country. There are needs that unfortunately will go unfunded in this budget, but should the city's organic growth exceed 2%, we will reap the promised benefit of half of any increase and will immediately reconsider meeting those needs next year with that additional funding. Tonight is our first step collectively as a, as a team in this budget journey, and that is this presentation. There will be multiple opportunities for you as a board to consider and weigh your options with respect to this budget. There will also be opportunity for the community to weigh in before you all send it over to the city council for consideration as the school board's adopted budget. There are many key dates that we will identify at the end of the presentation tonight that will give some information to you and to the community about when things are, are coming up. But before I get into the presentation, I also want to take just a moment to thank a couple of people who've worked extraordinarily hard on this budget. First, our Chief Operating Officer, Kristen Michael, and also our Budget Director, Michelle Koppick. It's their tireless work of pulling all of this work together and supporting you with a comprehensive budget book and materials that you didn't get last year. So each year, we intend to improve our, our game, if you will, with respect to those materials that will be available to you, and at the end of the presentation tonight, Kristen will walk through that budget binder and share with you some of the materials that are in there to orient you. So, starting with our, our FY '20/20 budget, this is the superintendent's budget. It all begins with our mission. Why do we exist? What is the work that we do here in the City of Falls Church that makes us great and requires us to continue meeting the needs of our students at a very high level? And our mission is that we are a student-centered, innovative, and inclusive community of lifelong learners. We aspire to be the premier international baccalaureate school division, and we strive to create a personalized environment that supports each child's unique needs and prepares every student to be responsible, caring, and internationally-minded citizens. I promise I won't read every slide to you, but I do want to make sure that it's clear that that is our core mission, and that is why we're here and what we are working towards. And everything that we will talk about within the budget really drives towards achieving that mission. So how do we achieve our mission? What we have shared with you and with others in the community on a number of occasions is, again, our placemat. And, and the top of our placemat, we have the three big things that we are working on this year, and the first is deploying best practices for teaching and learning to ensure that we close achievement gaps with an emphasis on special populations and ensuring that we have excellent operational efficiency and effectiveness. And this budget, you will see, focuses in, particularly in this compensation area, which will allow us to achieve many of those pieces in the placemat. Our triennial plan, which you won't be able to read because it's too small up on the screen, is online and available for anybody who would like to see it, but it is essentially our strategic plan over the next three years that shows alignment to our placemat, but also underneath each of those priorities which I named at the beginning of the presentation, there are very specific strategies that have been outlined to support the work towards each of those strategies, and that can be found on our website. Our student achievement in the City of Falls Church Schools is strong. This is a snapshot from the state accreditation set, website. You'll see we are a fully accredited school, school division. We have high marks across the board for reading, math, science proficiency, social studies. Our enrollment numbers are there. Our per pupil spending is heavily weighted towards the local, the local jurisdiction, which makes it complicated for us sometimes, I think, in our budgeting process because we are reliant so heavily on the local, local tax dollars. And there you will see also our attendance rate. Taking a little deeper dive into each of those, these are some of our SOL pass rates. While these are one measure of success, they are not the measure of success, but they are important to put out there, just to give you a sense of how our students are doing in the context of, of the experience related to the rest of the state. So you'll see the state of Virginia on the far right. Our 2017, 18 FCCPS pass rates are second to the right in reading, writing, mathematics, history, social science, and science. All of them are excellent and at very high levels, and higher than our comparative samples around the state. Our graduation rate is second to none. While it says 98.5, and our numbers are really small, we know who those two students were, and we know where they went, so we actually have a really good sense of, of our, of our graduation, and because we know where they went, I would submit to you that our graduation data in the WABE guide actually is slightly better than what is the 98.5 that is noted in that comparison. Here are some of the things that we're also very proud of in the City of Falls Church Schools, as we work towards becoming and striving to become the best IB school division in the country. Just a few little data points here that, to share with respect to participation in International Baccalaureate Diploma Program courses and exams. Eighty-six percent of our juniors this year are enrolled in at least one International Baccalaureate course. Eighty-seven percent of our seniors this year are enrolled in at least one International Baccalaureate school, International Baccalaureate class. And this year, 51 students are seeking the IB diploma in comparison to last year when we had 40 students that were seeking the IB diploma. So we have 11 more students that are seeking that diploma. And while that is something that we strive towards, it is not the metric of, it's not the only metric of success with respect to the International Baccalaureate program. What we know from the data that's out there is that when students experience the rigor of an International Baccalaureate course, whether they go for the diploma or not, they're much better positioned for their college experience when they leave our school at the end of their senior year. Additionally, we are also preparing our students by creating a pipeline, a pipeline of experience in International Baccalaureate that will help our students move forward. In our elementary schools, we have our PYP exhibitions that are happening again this year, and at each year that they happen, they keep getting better and better. We have our MYP Community Service Project at the middle school, and we had a spotlight on that last meeting, and that was a really outstanding group of students that were working on their community service project. And at the high school, the MYP Personal Project, or the CAST Project, which is the creativity, activity, creativity, activity and service project is also going on, and that ends the MYP experience for our students at the end of 10th grade. Many other student recognitions need to be recognized, I think, as we talk about our strengths as a school system. We are recognized in interdisciplinary, co-curricular, and athletic activities all the time. At the secondary level, you'll see up there, just tonight, we recognized our Champions of Character. We have National World Strides Music Festival, New York's Carnegie Hall Performance. We have a student who is going to the Sydney Opera House this year, who was invited to play as well. We host an IB art exhibition every year, which is outstanding. We have one of the top robotics teams in the, in the world, 1418. Get the T-shirt, it's really cool. Our Cyber Patriots team is participating and moving forward in our state rounds in the cybersecurity challenges. And in addition to that, at the elementary students, elementary level, we had Wordmasters, Math Olympiad, MathCon, and Odyssey of the Mind, all of which our students are very successful in as well. This is a community that invests in education. And, and another way that our community invests in education is by making sure that we have the very best facilities that we can possibly have for our students to learn in. So part of the context of our budget tonight really has to include the conversation about the new George Mason High School. Our community investment of $120 million through that, through the bond passage last year, and the way that that will play out with respect to meeting the needs of those bond payments is something that we're very cognizant of, that the city and general government and the schools are taking on as well. And, and this community cares about that and has done an extraordinary job, I think, supporting our work with George Mason, the new George Mason High School. I want to take just a second to talk about enrollment projections in the process. Many of you have seen this piece of the presentation before, but I do think it's important to, to remind the community that we do use the Cooper Center at the University of Virginia to do our projections. The Cooper Center is also called upon by the State of Virginia to allocate their state sales tax to all the school divisions as well. So they are a, an organization that is well-revered and represented across the state with respect to good demography and good science that goes behind that. What they look for in terms of fall membership counts are birth data. They're also looking at historical and current fall membership counts and taking into account other factors that they deem important. And what we've shared this evening is some projection history and accuracy. And here you'll see the red line is the actual, the actual enrollment versus the blue line, which was the projected enrollment. What's important, and I think interesting to look at in this slide, is that in the last two years, we've actually come in below our enrollment projection, and that's important in tonight's budget, specifically when we speak to being able to come in with a budget that provides a step and a COLA for our employees, also offsets the cost of substitute pay, picks up healthcare and the like, without going over the 2% guidance. So in here, you'll see in Weldon Cooper's, the two notes in this chart that I think are important, is Weldon Cooper's FY '20/20 projection for our enrollment for next year is 2,699 students, which is an increase of 54 students from our opening day enrollment, or, or, I'm sorry, the September 30 enrollment of 2018. We have made a conscious decision in this budget to adjust that enrollment number down slightly and, and decrease the number of projected kindergarteners because there has been some discrepancy in the last two years, and specifically, it's been in the area of kindergarten. And we have not met the kindergarten enrollment for the last two years, and we think that, based on the numbers of students that we have in kindergarten now and the students that we anticipate will be coming, we actually can decrease that enrollment projection by 30 for kindergarten, which puts us up about 24 students as opposed to 54 students in comparison to the Weldon Cooper number. Some of the student services that we provide in the school system that I think are important to indicate in this presentation also, is that we have a very unique population that's very diverse, and we have a lot of students who are language minority students or our language instruction education program or our LEAP program. You will see from last year and the year prior, we went up by 28 students, which was an increase of 12% across the LEAP population. Our economically disadvantaged students from one year to the next, from 2017 to 2018, went up by 23 students, which was an 11% increase of our economically disadvantaged students, and our students with disabilities increased by 23, which was a 6% increase as well. Those are not insignificant percentage increases with respect to the total enrollment increase that we're seeing, which is the bottom of that chart. Our total enrollment shift in population grew by 28, which is 1%. So we are outpacing our overall enrollment with students who have very specific needs and very specific programs. And one thing, another piece of information for you as a board and for the community that isn't picked up in this, is we also have 158 students during that same time period that did require a 504 plan as well, which is another type of plan that is put together by the school counseling team. These are, these are duplicated counts, I think it's worth noting, so there may be some students who are in special ed and also economically disadvantaged. However, even though they may be duplicated counts, it's important to note that those are discreet, discreet services that each of those students are getting and require us to meet their needs that way. Some information about our proposed revenue and expenditures. And in revenue, you'll see on the left-hand side that 82.6% of our overall budget does come from the local transfer from the, from the city council. About 13.6% of our budget comes from the state, and the remaining comes from federal and fees that we collect and some beginning balance. We'll share some of that information with you going forward as well. I think it's important to note that when 82.6% of our local, of our budget comes from our local funding authority and 13.6% comes from the state, it gives you some indication of the overall wealth of the community that you're in. On the right-hand side, you will see the expenditures, and important to note here is that 85.4% of our overall budget is in salaries and benefits, which means that the vast majority of our budget in the schools is in people. The remaining 13.4% is in logistics and 1.3% is in transfers and reserves. So when we think about where can we go to potentially quote-unquote tighten our belt, the only place that we really have an opportunity to go when we go, when we are asked to tighten our belt, is to go to people because of the percentage of population, or the percentage of the budget that is in people. So going back to the 2020 city council guidance, I think it's important to note again that on December 10th, we were given guidance from the city council that we were to look at a transfer of 2% or organic revenue growth across the city. That means that the share to the schools is $844,231, and that was our starting point, which we got a chance to, to work with as we began our conversations. The general government has agreed to take on the funding obligation of WAMADA, and in, in that increase that they are experiencing from WAMADA, it's roughly $400,000. If it comes down to anything less than $300,000, anything less than $300,000 will be shared at a 50-50% share between the schools and the general government. And any additional organic revenue beyond 2% will also be shared with the schools at a 50-50% as well. And I think that those are two areas that we're going to watch very closely with respect to potential additional revenue sources, so that we can begin to get at some of those unfunded pieces that I'll share in a little while. So our state revenues this year are based on the governor's proposed budget that was released on December 18th. We are going to see a state aid increase this year. Right now, it's projected at 4.2%, and primarily, that is due to incentive funding for compensation. And because of this school board's commitment last year to provide our employees with a 3% COLA, that in addition to a step and a COLA this year, puts us in position where we will be eligible to provide our employees with an overall average salary increase of 5% or better in the biennium, which then gives us the opportunity to hit that state funding. So by, by providing a step and a COLA this year, we'll be able to utilize the state funding in that compensation, compensation incentive fund that's there as well. Also, we saw some additional special education regional grant funding from the state as well. Sales tax increases this year will be up to 1.9%. That is increases across the state, but ours, ours will be decreased because of the share, our share of the statewide enrollment. So when you think about the denominator and the numerator, when we have less kids, we, we will have less money. The state budget, just by the way, will be finalized by the General Assembly in the spring, but right now, this is the information we have to work with, and we feel like at this point in time, it's very solid. Other projected revenue to consider is that, again, we rely very heavily on our operating, for our operating budget from our friends on the city council. That local revenue combined with the state and the other sources add up to about 96.1%, which leaves about 3.9% left to fund in our 100% budget. And you'll see, from a federal perspective, our projected total of revenue, which is about 1.1%, is $586,162, and this year, we're expecting an increase in IDEA funding, which is special education funding, of about $29,604. And then we are looking at utilizing some beginning balance and other revenue to, to close the gap for us of $450,000. So again, our primary priority, our number-one priority is compensation. So a step this year, if all of our employees who are eligible do make that step, that will be an average increase right off the, off the bat of 2.95% for all eligible employees. And just for the good of, of the school board and for the community, the step is an ongoing commitment that we make as a school division to progress our employees through a salary scale when they come in. It is a step and grade scale, so when, when a person comes in, and, and one thing to consider in this budget process too, is that there, several years ago, a decision was made that the first three years that a teacher were in the system, they actually wouldn't step, but on their fourth year, they would step. So in a year where a, a school system, our school system doesn't provide a step, it's one more year that that first-year teacher, second-year teacher, or third-year teacher has to delay getting their step to get to, to that fourth step. But the important part of this is that this is sort of the compact that we make, that school divisions around the country make with their employees, is that when you come in, we're going to put you in a salary and lane process that will be predicated on not only your experience, but also your education. And when our teachers go back and get higher education, take more classes to become better at what they do, they also can move up in that salary scale and salary lane process. The 1% cost of living also provides- The 1% cost of living also provides for our salary scale remain competitive, and that actually moves the entire scale up and will help us maintain some competition with surrounding school divisions. We also are looking at substitute pay. We've done an analysis of the region and learned that we are somewhere in the middle with respect to most of the substitute pay, but there are a couple of places where we fall woefully short. And so we are looking at adding $2 per hour to solve some of the short and long-term substitute pay issues. And also, we are experiencing and building into our budget a projected 10% rate increase in healthcare. That increase applies to both the employer portion and the employee portion as well. And one of the conversations that comes up annually is are there efficiencies between the city and the general government and the schools? And I just want to make sure that you all are aware that we, along with the general government, participate in the same healthcare plan. And we are both preparing for a 10% increase in rate. And if that changes and comes down, we will both recognize the benefit of that as well. Some contractual adjustments that we need to make from last year's budget to this year are in school nursing. This year, we were underbudgeted in 2019 in the school nursing fund by $100,000 and in our grounds maintenance budget also by $130,000. So we are making those two adjustments in the 2020 budget as well. So when we think about where are we going to go to close the gap? Because remember, I said we had $1.7 million of need and $844,000 of money to use. So we are looking at doing some reduction and some realignment within our school division. And the first is in salary turnover. Every year, we hire a significant number of teachers and staff to our school division. And when we do, we experience some salary adjustments that happen. So for example, if we have a retiring employee who is leaving at the top of a scale and we bring someone in who perhaps comes in at the middle of that salary scale, they're going to come in at a lower salary, which gives us some savings. And if we extrapolate that across the division with all of the positions that we have, we are anticipating about $185,000 in savings across the division in salary turnover. Additionally, we offer some other post-employment benefits, or OPEB for short. And we are experiencing, based on some actuarial liability information that we've learned about our retiree healthcare, that we can actually assume some savings of about $71,000. Also, there's a transitional retirement program that some of you might be familiar with that started back in 2002 that provided for some stipends for people that wanted to retire early. We still are paying out some of those stipends to folks that retired early, but this year we are going to experience, because of participants who are not engaged in that anymore, about a $44,000 savings. And so there, you'll see in that last bullet, the participants or individuals that were employed from school year 2002, 2003, and before, who had a minimum age of 45 and five years of satisfactory employment in FCCPS, could opt to take that transitional retirement program. And many, many folks did take advantage of that. But each year, as they go by, we anticipate that we'd be saving more and more in that transitional retirement program. Additionally, we are looking at some program and position realignment. None of the position realignment that we're talking about would at all impact our planning factors. Last year, as you'll recall, we had a number of conversations about planning factors. And one of the points that I think was really important, and I'll give attribution to Mr. Reitinger, was to stop changing the planning factors to make the budget work. And we are not going to do that anymore. What we've done is we took the planning factors and we didn't modify them at all. And we are able to live within the planning factors that we've ascribed to ourselves as a school division, that the school board has adopted and are able to staff our buildings based on those planning factors by realigning and finding approximately five positions in the division. All those positions that would be found would be through attrition. We don't anticipate that anyone would lose their job. So we would work very hard to find those five positions, again, through attrition, and it could be across the division. I'm not talking about just teacher positions. It could be a combination of multiple positions. It helps us align and focus and align our resources around our projected enrollment needs, and we are projecting a savings of about $465,000 with those program realignments. We also are talking about logistical reductions. These are, all of our non-personnel accounts are going to be reviewed and scrutinized, and we believe that we can carve out about $100,000 in those non-personnel accounts after being scrubbed, but that would be finalized in the FY 20 budget adoption when it comes to you. So those are the places that we are going to go to, to help close that gap. There are a number of unfunded needs that we want to keep at the top of our mind so that as we move forward in the process, in case there is more revenue that comes available to us, there are a couple of things up here, some examples. We would like to increase two of our halftime social workers to full-time. Looking at a behavior specialist who could increase from a halftime to a full-time. Looking at a middle school dean of students to extend to 11 months. Currently, the dean of students is a 10-month employee and also does a lot of work, for example, with our special education population and does a lot of parent work. Looking at moving our NYPD coordinator to a full-time position at the high school and at the middle school, who is currently part-time. That person splits time between Mary Ellen Henderson and George Mason. Looking at additional instructional technology support and then ManageBack software, which is a software that will help us expand our IB program system-wide. So those are some things that we would look at as well. Just in terms of cost-per-pupil comparison, from the WABE guide, you'll see that we are the fourth bars across. You'll see Falls Church City Public Schools, and we are among the highest cost-per-pupil in the region. And part of the reason that that cost is so high is because we maintain very small class size. If we were to go to larger class sizes, we would be able to bring that cost-per-pupil down, but that's not a value that this board or the community cares about. And so we will be paying very close attention to our class size and will be able to maintain what your expectations are. You'll see an increase in this coming year's cost-per-pupil of about $608, which is about a 3.28% increase over last year. Here's a proposed budget highlights sheet. It's a very quick takeaway. On the right-hand side, our revenue increases in real dollars. So you'll see an FY 19 funds available and the increases in state aid, in federal aid, and then also in local, and giving us a total proposed budget of $52,137,505 versus our expenditure adjustments. And you'll see at the top, expenditure adjustments, the cost of employee compensation, additional contractual obligations for professional services, and then subtracting out reduction and realignment, compensation, early retirement, et cetera, gets us to a bottom line of $52,137,504. So we are a dollar off, but we will figure out where that dollar is going to be and are excited to be able to propose to you tonight, though, a budget that we believe is responsive, is reasonable, is thoughtful, is clear, and focuses on those that focus on us. And those are our teachers and our staff. As I mentioned at the beginning, there are going to be a number of opportunities for the board and the community to engage around this budget and to ask a lot of questions, starting just with next week. We will have our first budget work session and look forward to having those conversations with you. But there, you'll see, we have some public hearings coming up. And then at a certain point, we will roll over to the city manager's budget presentation and then ultimately, we will wrap up later this spring. So Chair Gill, it's going to take me a minute to sort of let that roll off the tongue. I appreciate your time as well as the board's time. And I would welcome any questions now, but perhaps it would be better to have Ms. Michael go through the budget materials because I think some of the information you might be looking for or asking are included in that. So it's sort of your prerogative, which you prefer.
If that's okay with the board, go ahead with Ms. Michaels. And then after that, we'll have Mr. Anderson read his disclosure. Thank you.
So thank you so much. Each board member tonight at the table has a binder of budget materials for them. We're also publishing this exact set of materials on our website as well as our budget question and answer responses. The first set is posted or will be posted later tonight. And then we're also posting the Excel spreadsheets to go with this budget as well. So all of those materials will be available online. So in the budget binder or online, the first thing that you'll see in the first section this year is we have a cover letter from Superintendent Noonan. So it opens with that cover letter. Section 1 includes the presentation that was presented tonight, so that's there. Section 2 has the placemat as well as our triennial plan. And for reference, we also included the current work plan that all of our schools and departments are working on. Section 3 is organization. So we have information for the community about the school board as well as the organizational charts for our school division. In section 4, we have enrollment information. So the first page is an enrollment chart that provides enrollment by grade number, including the adjusted kindergarten number. That chart provides comparisons of our projected enrollment for 2020 with the current school year and then also comparisons with our prior years. And immediately following that is the enrollment presentation that was shared with the school board in November. And when we get into section 5, that's really budget specifics. So the first thing you'll see in that section is the superintendent's proposed budget. We have a narrative section that talks about our enrollment highlights, our revenue highlights, and our expenditure highlights. Then immediately following that, we have detailed all of the initiatives in the budget. So this chart, which is part of the presentation, you'll see we've tried to start with what is our current year's budget, and then we've walked through every single change included in the budget to get us to that new bottom line number for the next year's proposed budget. So this section will walk through and provide a little bit more information about each of the initiatives that Dr. Noonan highlighted. So when you look at items such as substitute pay, for example, the narrative will provide information about what is our current substitute pay and what will that pay be after the $2 an hour increase that was proposed. Following that, we have our unfunded needs, and then we have a high-level operating fund statement that really provides our budget for prior years, our actuals for FY 16, 17, and 18. The budget for this current year, fiscal year 19, as well as a proposed budget for next year. And that's broken down by those highest level categories. So when you look at revenue categories like our transfer from Falls Church City Government, state, federal, others, and beginning balance, and then it breaks down expenditures by salaries, benefits, logistics, and our transfers and reserves. Section 6 is all about revenue and our operating budget. So we have pie charts. Then this year, we've also included additional narrative. So we walk through each revenue category and really try to provide additional information for the board and the community about what is in those categories of revenue. So you'll find a lot more information there about the state and our local composite index, how they allocate revenue. And then following that, there's the first of our expenditure and revenue charts that really provides revenue by every revenue object, which is our lowest level of revenue detail, where it comes from. Section 7, our expenditures, they follow the same format as revenue. So starting out with a pie chart, kind of a high-level summary, and then information about each of our expenditure categories, followed by that expenditure chart. And then we've also included in section 7, information about our cost per pupil. So what has our cost per pupil been over the prior years? Also included in here is the change in our cost per pupil, when you look at it indexed for inflation, and comparisons with the Washington Area Boards of Education Guide. Section 8 looks at our other funds. So we have information on our community services fund, our food service fund, and we've also included the full CIP adopted by the board on December 11th in this section. Section 9 is the budget calendar. And section 10, we're calling the appendix. So in the appendix, you'll find our school planning factors. For school planning factors, we have the staffing planning factors first, and they're followed by the allocations used for materials and supplies. So those are in that section as well. Following that in this section, the next thing that we have are our salary and fee schedules. So we've included all of the salary scales for the proposed budget for 2020. So all of these scales were adjusted by the 1% COLA included in the proposed budget. And then following that, we have our first of our financial charts. So the first provides a detailed budget by school. So this takes every school's budget and it groups it first by what that category is, so first by salaries, and then it includes all of them by our object or expenditure level group for the school. So you can see on the very first page, it's Henderson, and we show all of their instructional salaries grouped together. Following that section, we've also broken out the budget again by school, but this time, we've broken it out by the organization level. So if you want to look at instructional salaries for regular instruction, you'll find that detailed presentation there. And that is for every single school and our system-wide data. And after all of those charts, the very last thing in this section is a comparison of our positions over time. So looking back, we found historical data from a prior budget question, and we've updated it to include our current year and our 2020 data. So looking at how many positions do we have in every category as compared to our number of students, so kind of a historical reference of how many positions to students. Then also posted on the web tonight and included in the binders behind section 11 is our first set of budget questions and answers. So I would be happy to walk through those, and then we'll take any questions if that works. Okay, I'll keep going. So our first question tonight, submitted by Shawna Russell, is asking about our organizational charts, specifically provide a current organizational chart that shows all of central office, including the specialists that are embedded in the schools that report to central office. So in this question, the first thing that you'll see on the first page is it really talks about the different groupings within academics. So it provides information about the coordinators when you look at LEAP, special education, MTSS, and mathematics, as well as PYP, MYP, and it walks through each of those categories. And then following that, you'll see the organization chart for the district as a whole, followed by the support organizational chart, and then a more detailed instructional and academics and instructional organization chart, including those other positions. Our second budget question, also from Shawna Russell, was to provide the current salary ranges for the various steps at each school. So what we've done in this section that we hope is helpful is we've provided the salary scales for our current school year as well as the salary scales for the following year. So first, you'll see all of the teacher salary schedules. This is that step and grade system that Dr. Noonan was talking about. So you'll see by their education level, we have a BA lane, which is the bachelor's degree lane, a bachelor's degree lane plus 18 credits, master's degree, and then you'll see the steps going down. So in this question response, first, you'll see all of the salary scales for FY 19, and then we've also included all of the salary scales for fiscal year 20 after that market scale adjustment is applied. So that's budget question number two. Budget question number three asks about a 10- to 15-year history of our salary steps given and cost of living adjustments, and then what populations did those COLAs and steps apply to. So we provided a chart that goes back to 2010, so it goes from 2010 to our proposed budget for 2020. And it breaks it down into teachers in the columns that are on the left side of the chart and support, which are closer to the middle. And then it shows a column that has step increases and then another column for any COLAs or scale adjustments. So when you look at the chart, it's going to show that both teaching staff and support staff have received a step eight times in the last 11 years, with one of those steps being granted at mid-year. So this chart will show exactly what adjustments were applied over that course of time. Question four looks at, over the past 10 to 15 years, what percentage of the cost of benefits have employees and the employer paid? So in this question, what we did is we focused on what we're currently paying and tried on a historical level to provide a high level of detail versus going back and pulling the individual rates for each year. So I'm going to focus on full-time employees. So the first is group health. We currently have been with our current health provider, TLC, since 2015. When we moved to TLC, we shifted, and the employer pays 80% of the cost of individual coverage for healthcare and 75% of the cost for any employees who pick what's called mini-family, which is your employee, self, and one other, or family coverage. That changed in 2015. Prior to that, it was about 5% lower. So when we made the change, the employer actually picked up a greater share of that cost. When we look at retirement costs for VRS, if we think back, in 2012, the Virginia General Assembly changed, and they required that every school system in Virginia start having the employee pay the employee and the employee pay the employee cost of the Virginia retirement system. Prior to that, almost all the jurisdictions in the state, including Falls Church, had the employer paying both the employer rate and the employee rate. But when the general assembly made that change, they also required that the employer shift at 5% to the employee, but they also had to offset it by a salary at 5% to the employee, but they also had to offset it by a salary increase that also was that same percentage amount, right? Saying that there was really no net impact to the employee. There was a slight impact because they had to pay all of their taxes and other things on a higher wage, right? But in terms of that, the employees have been paying that 5% to VRS ever since we completed that shift, which was in 2015. And then the last big benefit category that we look at is life insurance, and Falls Church City Public Schools pays the full cost for employee group life, which includes both the employer and the employee rate that's set by the state. So those have all been pretty consistent over this last period of time. Then our last question posted for tonight has to do with the ratio of students to staff. So when we look at the growth of student population and compare it to the number of positions, you know, what does that look like over time? So this chart shows data going back, all the way back to 2004, and it breaks down our students-to-staff ratio using the following categories. So how many students do we have per administrative position, per teaching position, per support position, and then per our total overall positions? So it shows that graph over time. So for example, there's two charts. Students per staff member on the top is graphed separately because there's a much larger number, and then on the bottom graph, we've graphed our teachers, administrative positions, and support positions. To help the board better understand the positions, we've also included on the backside of this page, the position data that we submitted to the Washington Area Boards of Education for our '19 WABE guide, so you can also see that breakdown to more delineated position levels. So those are our first set of budget questions and answers.
So at this point, we've given you a ton to chew on, but I, again, I want to thank Kristin Michael and Michelle Kopic for their extraordinary work, and also remind the community, and I know Kristin said it, but all of these materials are online. They were posted tonight. We did a PDF of the entire binder, so anybody can go in and find out all this information as well. So trying to be as transparent as we possibly can in this budget process. So with that, we will answer any questions you might have tonight, and if we don't know the answers, we'll let you know, and then we'll get back to you at the budget work session next time.
Thank you so much. This is a really comprehensive budget book. It's so clear, and I especially love the narrative sections. It's going to make it really easy for our community to understand the budget. And Mr. Anderson, before we discuss the budget, would you please read your disclosure?
Sure, thanks. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a disclosure I need to read before we have any conversation. I have consulted with the school board attorney, and am making the following disclosure of interest pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3112B1. Pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3115H, I have a personal interest in the school board budget, and my spouse is an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and I am a member of a group of three or more persons affected by budget decisions. I am able to participate in our discussions fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. And I will open it up to discussions. If anyone have any questions? Mr. Reddinger?
Thank you. I'd also like to give my thanks. It's a great set of materials clearly presented, and for the work that the entire school system did to come forward with a budget that, while tight, will let us need guidance and still help protect our employees. This is more of, not an immediate question, but a sort of a data request. Also, I feel like, since all of the budget questions so far have been asked by Ms. Russell, you know, I'm underperforming. I feel a need to do something.
I was hoping no one noticed that, Phil. Thanks.
So the budget, including all of the actuals over time, is helpful? I always like to see, when we go into a budget, three things. Not necessarily the 16 actuals and 17 actuals, but I like to see 18 actuals, 18 budget, 19 actuals, and forecast versus budget, and then what you have. So it's, the older stuff is not as important. What I'm really interested in seeing is the actual, the budget to set against the actuals for '18, and if it's possible to get a how we're performing against and forecast, against the forecast in '19, that's great. If not, then a budget versus actuals for '17, because I'd like to be able to see how we over or underspend over time. But it's very helpful, and that doesn't necessarily need to be to the same level of detail. I mean, I don't care if it's broken down by school, it's just really the big budget categories I'm interested in seeing, how we've done in forecasting in the past. Thank you. Now, I want a tab next.
And we have any other questions? Mr. Castillo?
Hey, Madam Chair. Excuse me, a couple of things. The, first of all, in, I forgot what it's called, the unfunded needs or the needs for which there are no funds. It would be helpful to see what the price tag is by each item. And then, in addition, in years past, the 13% logistics piece of the pie was broken out in more granular fashion, and while on page 90 and 91, you list what the constituent elements of logistics are. I think it would be helpful to know, because, you know, some of this is contracted services, materials and supplies, utilities, I assume, schools, textbooks, and computers, and things like that. I think it would be helpful to know how that 13% breaks down, because I think if you just say it's gray logistics pie piece, that doesn't really advance the ball too much. On the other hand, you don't want to break it down into, you know, 0.1% is this and 0.3%, so I leave it to you to figure out how to slice and dice that a little more, but...
Yeah, and we've included, it starts on page 95, where we've taken that and we've broken logistics down into more categories, right? So we've broken them down into contracted services, materials and supplies, utilities, insurance, travel, and rental combined together, and then our capital and capital replacements, and then lastly, our transfers and reserves. So do those sound like the right-sized buckets, or maybe still a little bit too big?
That's why we pay you the big bucks.
Okay. We've grouped them at that level, so you can look at the detail at that level, but we've also included the individual objects within each, so you can look at them at an even more granular level. So if you want to look inside materials and supplies, for example, and see textbooks as compared to instructional supplies, they're both shown.
Yeah, and I think if you could map that then into that 13% pie slice, that would be great.
Sure.
And then, I guess the other thing, and maybe it's here and I didn't see it, the evergreen discussion of the fund balance and how it works is the gift that keeps on giving, so maybe that's here. If it's not, it would probably be good to discuss, so. But very, very helpful, so thank you.
Any other questions? I have two, and you're welcome to answer these later in the, I don't need an answer right now. One is about the kindergarten enrollment projection. If our kindergarten class does come in higher than that, what impact will that have? And this, you want to...
I can answer that now. That is, that is one area that we're going to look at very closely, and if we do get to a point where we need to add a teacher, we'll maintain, we'll maintain it.
And the second question is about the, what are we calling? It's not special, not special population, are we calling something different? The special...
I know who you're talking about.
Great, okay, so I wanted to make sure I'm using the right nomenclature. Do we have that data for 2018, 2019, or is that some analysis that we do at the end of the year to see how those numbers may have grown this year?
We typically do it towards the end of the year, only because we submit the special education data to the state in December. We get verification after that, and then, but we could pull some preliminary data if that would be helpful, I just don't know how.
If we had preliminary information, you know, are those populations increasing even more this year over last year, recognizing that those numbers are definitely still in flux throughout the rest of the school year? Thank you. Mr. Reddinger?
I apologize for a second bite at the apple. This is more of a, I've had these conversations before, and I know, they deal with the time study. So one of the questions that comes up all the time is for the paraprofessional staff, the past reductions in the number of hours and the differences across the system, whether that's appropriate, in particular, whether or not we're expecting some of the paraprofessional staff at Mount Daniel or Jesse Thackeray to, in fact, they need to be there longer than the amount of time that they're allotted in terms of hours with bus duties and things like that. I know that that, the time study is not going to be completed in time to take that into account in this budget season, but I would, I'd like there to be a known plan for addressing that. Not that people will be happy with the outcome, but, you know, what the processes for determining whether those hours should be adjusted or should be kept where they are, and then rationalized across the entire system. So that may be more a less about this budget, but I think people would be more comfortable if they knew that there was a resolution in sight, regardless of what the resolution is.
Thank you.
Mr. Castillo?
Sorry. Two more things, which brings me up to five, which I think evens me up with Ms. Russell. So, I think.
Can we get away from the competitive nature here? This is staff work.
I'll see your question and raise... But first one's just a point of clarification. Substitute teachers do not get benefits. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct. Unless, over the course of a 12-month period, according to the Affordable Care Act, any of our employees, even if they're temporary in nature, like a substitute, who are averaging, working 30 more hours per week over the course of a year, are entitled to health insurance, right? If they so elect to choose that.
And does that happen much?
So we have only in total, when you look at our temporary employees, this year there were between five and seven employees that met that criteria, and very few of them elect to participate in benefits, like just one or two. It's very small.
Okay. All right, great. And, oh, the other question was, I know we talked about this in the past, we set out our projection history and accuracy on enrollment. Is there one forthcoming from our good friends in general government about the revenue projection and accuracy?
I know you asked that question last time, and we talked about it earlier. We'll get an answer to that question.
Any last questions? Ms. Russell? Moving on to section 9.02, I also want to quickly say thank you again for this great job. Moving on to section 9.02, approval of first reading of policies. Turn it over to Ms. Minson.
Good evening. We have five policies for first reading this evening. The first is a food service policy. We'd actually have three policies. EF, EFB, and EFD would replace our current policy 4.42. The three policies that are replacing just break out essentially what is our current food policy 4.42 into a food service management policy at 4.42, which is the exact same language of, as the first sentence as 4.42, and then the penultimate paragraph of 4.42. So we'll start with EF, food service management, if there are any questions about that proposed Hearing none. The second food service policy, EFD, titled Food Sanitation Program, is two short sentences saying that personnel and facilities use for food service are subject to state laws regarding and regulations regarding restaurants and food service establishments, and governed by regulations promulgated by the State Board of Health. This is similar to what's included in the food sanitation paragraph of our current policy 4.42. Any questions about policy EFD? Hearing none. The final food service policy is EFB, free and reduced-priced food services. This is slightly different than the language that we have included in paragraphs 2, 3, 4, and 5 of policy 4.42, but it's consistent with, the VSBA model policy is both consistent with federal law, and is up to date, and is what we are currently doing. There was one proposed tweak to the language at EFB, and I apologize if I did not put line numbers on these, or if it's just not line numbers on the one that I printed for myself. There are line numbers. So at line number, what was it, Mr. Anderson, 16? Changing criteria, changing the word is after milk to are, since it's the criteria and procedures. I think that that change would make sense, and welcome any other questions or concerns or issues with EFB. Hearing none. The remaining two policies for the evening are much meatier policies. Right now, we have policy 8.36, grievance procedures for FCCPS personnel policy, which just generally says that the Falls Church City School Board adopts the grievance procedures in the Virginia Code and the Virginia Administrative Code. And then we have subsequent regulations and forms for separate grievance process for what are called professional personnel staff and support staff. Under moving towards the VSBA model policies, we would completely remove 8.36 as a policy, and rather than saying we follow the Virginia Code, there would be a clear, frankly, very short two sentences on professional staff grievances, and then a longer policy for support staff grievances. Looking first at the professional staff grievances, policy, model policy GBM would replace 8.3, policy 8.36 and regulation 8.36RA. Right now, I spent a lot of time going through what our current teacher grievance or professional staff grievance, and professional staff would be staff who has a professional license from the Virginia Board of Education. What are current grievance procedures for professional staff and what the model policy would? The model policy is a short sentence saying that the Falls Church City School Board adopts the most recent version of the procedure for adjusting grievances as promulgated by the Board of Ed. The Board of Education most recently revised these teacher grievance procedures in November of 2016. And frankly, right now, as our policies exist, they're out of alignment with the Virginia Code. So if and when we have a professional staff member who comes to us with a grievance, we first look to the Virginia Code and have to follow that, but then if there are any additional rights that are given under our professional personnel grievance policy, then we are kind of looking at both at once, and sometimes those don't align. So by moving from our regulation 8.36RA to policy GBM, it would take away those redundancies and make it very clear what the process is. In looking at what the Board of Ed has adopted, we proposed adding a sentence to policy GBM that specifically says, "A link to the Virginia Board of Education's procedure for adjusting grievances can be found on our website." So any teacher who has concerns with grievance wouldn't look at our policy and say, "Well, what does that mean?" Or "Where do I go?" Or "Where's the up-to-date version of the Virginia Board of Education's current statutory provision?" So we'll make sure that that's on our website, to make it very clear to staff, where do they go when they have concerns. So I went through the, the chapter 90, the procedure for adjusting grievances that the Board has adopted, and I compared it line for line to 8.36RA. There's very similar, part ones are the definition, part two is the grievance process, the almost word-for-word similar. The biggest change in going for professional staff with the grievance procedure is, under our policies as it exists now, there's a fact-finding panel where the teacher who's grieving a decision selects one employee to serve as their panel. The superintendent would select one of their own employees to serve as a panel, and then those two individual employees would select the third impartial member who would chair the panel that would be made up of the three staff members. If there's no agreement between the two selected panelists of who the neutral panel member will be, then we go to a circuit court judge who gives us a list of names, and the names are gone back and forth, but that process takes a lot of time, and the fact-finding panel isn't part of the Virginia Board of Education's grievance procedure. Instead, going to a fact-finding panel and then to a decision by the school board, there is a hearing officer hearing. A hearing officer is someone who's appointed by the school board, who has enough knowledge to understand the code and what the expectations are of professional staff. The hearing officer hears evidence, takes in witnesses, decides whether certain information will come in or not, listens to all of the material that would be part of the written record that then goes to the school board, and the school board makes a decision on that written record and the recommendation of the hearing officer. The school board does have a right to recall witnesses, ask additional questions if the school board so chooses, but that's, that's the biggest change from the, the current grievance procedures for non-dismissals and the Virginia Administrative Code, the Board of Ed for non-dismissals. The part three for dismissals is very similar, almost word-for-word in many regards for professional staff grievances. Instead of 15, 15 calendar days after receiving notice of a recommendation for dismissal or probation, instead it's 10 business days, but that was really the only substantive change between the, our policy and the proposed policy. There is a little bit shorter timeframe as well, but I found the Board of Education's version a little bit easier to follow as far as what the next steps are, so hopefully it would make the process clear for everyone involved, for the school board, for staff, for the superintendent. The other thing for both policy GBM and for policy GBM... The other thing for both policy GBM and for policy GBMA, the support staff grievances, and I'm hoping to get to all the personnel policies this spring before the beginning of the fiscal year, I would recommend that the board, when the board is ready for second reading and adoption of these policies, add in that the policies aren't going to be effective until July 1, 2019. What that means is any grievance that would come between now and July 1st would be under our current policies, and by being effective July 1, 2019, it does a few things. One is, these personnel policies, I had five uninterrupted days at the office during the winter break where I didn't get any phone calls, and just piecing apart the web of the personnel policies took the entirety of my time. And I, I could see some concerns down the line if we don't adjust all of the other policies and have them effective at the same date. For example, the definitions of personnel, professional staff. The other thing is, current teachers who are here, if they do have a grievance, it would be a little bit of a moving target because right now, they're presented for first reading. If it's second reading and adoption in February, then it's changing the grievance procedure during the contractual year of staff. So, by making it effective July 1, 2019, staff who enters into a contract with us this spring would know this is going to be the policy under which they, they would bring grievances or other personnel actions. So, the personnel policies that relate to employment and FMLA and some, some of the bigger issues, I'm hoping that we, if the Board's amenable to it, we, they can be adopted over the course of this spring, but they would all be effective July 1, 2019, out of fairness to staff and recognizing that sometimes there are intertwined parts that are difficult to, to pull out separately. That was a long explanation. I'm happy to talk more about GBM. While the language is just two simple sentences, it is, it is the Virginia Administrative Code at Chapter 90 that would govern the procedure for adjusting grievances going forward.
Any questions? Ms. Redinger?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, my only question is actually about the effective date.
Yes.
Part. I, Ms. Minson, I, I hear what you have to say, and I think that's, I hadn't thought about the interrelated policies part. I think kind of set against that is, these, these processes make a lot more sense to me, particularly the use of the hearing officers and sort of the way this is described. I don't know if that countervails me unless, it would seem to me that except for the problem of wanting to adjust all the policies at the same time, it would make, it would be doable to go ahead and, you know, just make them effective as the date for grievances that take place after the issuance. I don't, but if it's, if it's going to be unduly complicated to untangle it all, I think I'm, I'm happy to go until the 1st of July. I just, I, especially if our current policies are odd, and you mentioned some of the concerns, at least with GBM, or the, our current versions of GBM, I think there's some value in fixing those sooner rather than later.
How does, is that, how does the Board feel about that? I'm, I'm happy to present it. Usually what I do is I just write the adopted date in red when we come for second reading. So, what I was going to propose was adopted February, I think our meeting is the 10th, February 10, 2019, effective July 1, 2019. I don't have to have that language, or I can have that in there, and you all can tell me next meeting if you want it effective July 1 or not.
Perhaps it would be, maybe we could go back and talk about the interrelated pieces to see how entangled these are with each other, because if some of them could be peeled off and become effective more immediately, that might be good information.
Okay.
We could talk about it.
Sure.
Great. Any other questions? Mr. Castillo?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Yes, with respect to when the change takes effect, and, you know, you could get in all kinds of things like retroactivity and blah, 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 blah. I, I think most of these are procedural rights rather than substantive rights. I don't know if BSBA would weigh in on that, but I, I wouldn't rule out doing something better sooner, but, but let's see. I had a question about in terms of linking to the Board of Ed's procedure, is that just going to be a mechanical link to whatever they've got?
Yeah, right now, the main link that I go to is the Virginia Legislative Information System. I think that's a clear place where the entirety of Chapter 90 is laid out, but if that were ever to be changed or that website weren't to be working, I could work with Mr. Brett to make sure that we, we link it to, to that. I don't think the Board of Education has a separate PDF document that they have linked on their website. They also link, I believe, the Virginia Legislative Information System website, but I'll make sure with Mr. Brett.
Yes, I, I don't know if there's a way to just link to that as opposed to having their materials nested within our own URL, because I think then that puts a burden on us to keep it updated, and then there's a question of, do we have to give notice if it changes on our webpage? And I don't know the answer to that. So, I think if you want to point to the Board of Ed, you know, maybe you point to the Board of Ed, Section 90 or whatever it is, and point out the germane sections, I, you have a pained look on your face, so I just.
That was, that was a little, the reason we intentionally did this is we have control over the HR website, and we know what's going to be up on there. So, if, if the Legislative Information System goes down or the Board of Ed links it to another way, we can easily adjust that, whereas we have no control over this, how, how the information system is going to be updated or what references there are going to be to that as the, the administrative code changes, so.
And as long as you're happy taking the action item to, to keep current on that, that's, that's fine, but, but it is, it is more work for you.
We would want to make sure that that's current, and we'd also want to make sure that there's a current link to it in our employee handbook. That would be the other thing, is we could update the employee handbook all at once in the summer, so that when the school year started, we could have all the updated new policies in there, which we could do whether they're adopted effective July 1 or, or over the course of the spring. But I'm not going to be able, I don't think, to update the personnel policies and then the handbook in real time. The handbook would just be updated prior to the start of the school year.
Okay. And then, just one other thing, maybe it's getting ahead of ourselves with respect to GBMA.
Mm-hmm.
It, it defines employees as full-time employees who've completed the probationary, and it does not mean part-time or temporary employees.
Yes.
Or people who haven't, I suppose, completed the probationary time.
That's right.
So, do they get a separate procedure, or do they have no process at all? And I don't, you don't need to answer that, but if, if we do need to fill that gap, then we need to fill that gap.
That's one of the gaps that will be filled with the future policies going on of, of both the probationary period for teachers and the probationary period for support staff.
Any other questions about GBM?
So, GBMA, which you just referenced, is a support staff grievance. This is, it's similar to our current policy in some regards, rather, while Regulation 8.36 RB has a two-part grievance process, similar to the professional staff grievance, where there's a grievance for all actions except for dismissal in probation, and then there's a Part 3 for notice of dismissal. GBMA provides, puts those together so that any grievance, any concern, any issue relating to employment and grievances defined there at lines 31 to 37 follows the same process. So, it's a little bit less choose-your-own-adventure and certainly more clear of what process For grievances going forward under GBMA, I spent a fair amount of time with the Director of HR, Amy Hall, and Kristen Michael discussing this, and I, I think the model policy provides a very clear process of, there is an initial meeting with the supervisor and Ms. Hall, the Director of HR, or designee. There's an appeal to the superintendent who selects a hearing officer. The hearing process, the hearing officer's, hearing is held within 15 working days of the employee request. There's notice to the employee of five days in advance prior to the hearing. The hearing officer's, decision is given within five working days. There's a five-working-day period to appeal the decision to the school board, and the school board, again, as with the professional staff grievance procedure, decides on the written record within 30 days. Comparing 8.36 RB, the Part 1 non-dismissal grievances to this, the, the previous grievance process for support staff, if it was a non-dismissal grievance, there would be 65 days before a school board hearing is held and 95 days before the decision by a school board. So, the model policy instead has a hearing held within 15 days and a school board decision. The max school board decision time is 50 days unless the hearing is many days long. So, it, it substantially shortens that process and I think provides some certainty and provides, for, I think, more due process for, for all involved, in part because you know when the end date is. And one of the challenges, this does remove the hearing before the school board of taking in the evidence and listening to the witnesses. One of the challenges of having a school board hearing is even getting a quorum present for the number of hours or days that it would take to gather that evidence. So, the school board still receives all that, reviews the transcript, can call their own witnesses or ask for more information, but that's done in a method where you're reviewing evidence that's been submitted or transcripts that have been prepared rather than sitting as a seven-member panel who services a judge. You take what the hearing officer has pulled in. So, that would be the difference in timing from the non-dismissal grievance for support staff. For the dismissal grievance for support staff, there'd be 75 days from the notice of recommendation to dismissal to the school board decision. So, again, the hearing's held within 15 days under the model policy GBMA, and the max amount of time to get to a school board decision is 50 days, so again, substantially shorter. Any questions about policy GBMA?
Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just had a couple of questions. So, there's a different, obviously, a substantial difference between the policies for the professional staff, the support staff, and that reflects additional rights that the professional staff have by virtue of being professionally certified and.
At the Board of Education, yes.
Right. So, that comes with that. Balanced against that, there are some differences in here, and I'm just sort of trying to sort of see, the one in particular that catches my eye is the difference in time for an initial response from the employee to the, the notice that there's a disciplinary action going forward. It's five days for the support staff and 15 for the professional staff. I'm just wondering if that might be a bit too short. There's some practicalities I could think of for people in responding to something like that, and I'm just wondering if that's, if that's maybe too short a time and might inadvertently send some message about the value of support staff versus the value of professional staff that we don't necessarily want to send. It's not the purpose of it, it's just, could it be interpreted that way?
So, the five days is what is, would be the minimum required under the Virginia Code is my understanding, but I, I think it'd be fine to lengthen that amount of time if, if that's what the Board wanted to do.
Okay. I don't know what others think. I, I bring it up as just something that maybe 10 days. I don't know, I'm picking a number that's a little bit higher but not 15, just to give people time if, you know, you, you, one could imagine a situation where you have to go back home and work on your request, and it's just time to make that happen, that might be quite difficult to do within five days. Anybody else have a feeling strongly about that, one way or another?
So, that would be changing five days at line six of Page 2 to 10 working days? The other thing, even though it is a shorter amount of time than the 15 that's provided by Regulation 8.36 RB, under the current policies, there's an informal conference with the employee and either the supervisor or the principal. Then, there's a formal meeting with 15 days, and then, there's a meeting with the superintendent within 15 workdays. So, it's, the meeting with the supervisor and HR is a little bit more clear that this is your grievance rights. Here's where you get a copy of this policy, here's where your rights begin, as opposed to, here's an informal process, but you have to request a formal meeting within 15 days of this meeting with no formal requirement to give the policy, to sit down to say, "This is when your clock starts." So, I do think that whether it's five days or 10 days, this process makes clear, this is what you need to do next if you want to, if, if you're not satisfied with, with what has been determined by your supervisor. Any other questions about policy GBMA?
If there are no more questions, thank you, Ms. Minson. Your thorough work as always. If there are no more questions, I would ask that someone move that we approve first reading.
Madam Chair, I move that the school board approve first reading of the following policies. EF, food service management. EFB, free and reduced price food services. EFD, food sanitation program. GBM, professional staff grievances, and GBMA, support staff grievances with the comments suggested by the board.
Thank you, Mr. Redinger. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Yes, Marty, could you, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Move on to Section, oh, any opposed? Great. Moving on to Section 10.01, future agenda items. Does anyone have any agenda items? Mr. Redinger?
That's my night. I'm enjoying the freedom of not being the vice chair. So, this actually, it's kind of a meta-comment about future agenda items, because I think we ought to talk about something for future agenda items. And I, I had a conversation with Mr. Anderson a few days ago specifically about making sure that when meetings are coming up, that we've got sufficient coverage from the board to attend them. And the idea occurred to us in conversation, I don't know who suggested it first, that it might make some sense, you know, at one meeting a month, to do a look ahead at the big meetings that are coming up where we don't have an assigned school board representative and just make sure that, you know, we highlight them, that we've got coverage, enough coverage, or at least someone to attend them. So, I don't know if that is future agenda items to be added to or just a new standard agenda item of upcoming meetings, but that at least seemed to me like a, you know, when some of us, and I point the finger myself here, get behind on email, it's a great way, it's the one time we're sort of all here, and it's a good opportunity to make sure that we're going to be represented at those places we need to represent. So, it's something I would at least suggest that the board consider looking at for future agendas.
Great. Mr. Anderson, did you have something, or is it the same?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I guess I would just agree that we had this conversation, and I think it's a good idea, and we can figure out just sort of how to make it work. It's a practicality, but otherwise, no.
Any other items? Ms. Webb?
A question about this particular one. Are we talking about big, bigger kind of community type of events to make sure that we're covered, or exactly which, which type of meaning? Because I do agree that there, there have been points where certain community meetings that we've kind of thought someone was going to be there, and then no one was there. I've been guilty of that one from time to time, but, uh, just, are we talking about something like that, just to kind of do the quick, here are some of the bigger point kind of community meetings? Or are we potentially talking about some of the other possible meetings that it would be good to have a member of the board there, be it potentially deferring sometimes certain meetings to the Chair, Vice Chair if they are available first, but then having someone there? And I'm thinking about some of the different things with the, with the West Falls Church Project and the High School Project and certain things that may come up in that point.
How about if we did this? What if, what if we brought next school board meeting, sort of a list of the upcoming meetings, and we could kind of begin to sort through what rises to the level of meeting coverage beyond the Chair, Vice Chair, et cetera, and then kind of work through that from that perspective, where we've got a chance to see what, what actually is on there? Makes sense?
Mr. Castillo?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I think the difference is not active and passive, but presence versus representing the board in some form or fashion, so as long as we keep that clear.
Anything else? Yes, Mr. Castillo?
I have one thing. I, I recently saw an article about just how evil bottled water is, and it occurred to me that one of the things that we talk about in our division, and we're working on it with respect to the High School Project, is environmental impact and sustainability. And I think that's an area where we could be, we, we may be doing a lot, and we're not communicating it well, and we probably, even if that's the case, could do even more. And so, at some point, I think that would be useful to bake into our meetings, maybe not before, during the budget process, but, but kind of engage with that issue a little more thoroughly.
Great. Thank you. Next, move on to 1101, the Superintendent.
Next, move on to 1101, the superintendent's report. Dr. Noonan?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. First is on Monday, January 21st is Elementary Give Day. Our fifth grade Give Day ambassadors are going to be visiting Mount Daniel classrooms this week to get them excited about it and we're excited for them. They'll be packing power packs, which are weekend food kits for our community members. And also this is the weekend from nine to one that is the blood drive. I'm sorry, on Mon, yeah, there's the blood drive for adult donations. We are very excited to announce that, and you may recall some time ago, I talked about the mental health first aid piece that was happening. And Rebecca Sharp, who's our Director of Special Services, along with Lisa, have put together some trainings for parents and staff members or family members who are interested in participating in the youth mental health first aid. And it went out for signup earlier this week and we sold out, like almost immediately. So we have 75 people already on the waiting list to participate. But we are very excited to start getting some of our staff and some of our, our parents trained in mental health first aid. And one of the things that we're committed to doing is trying to figure out how to identify some of those folks as well, whether it's through a colored lanyard or whatever the case may be, so kids that are in crisis know who they can go to that have been trained in that mental health. And so there, we're working through Fairfax County Mental Health and the Community Services Board, along with our special ed advisory group, has sort of taken that as one of their challenges and charges for the year as well. It's build season for the first robotics team at George Mason High School. As I mentioned earlier this evening, you know, our VIVICTUS team is deep, working on their, their themed project of destination deep space. And so they're, they're working hard on their robot right now as, as we speak, probably. Stay tuned for the end of the week. This week, we are going to announce the nominees for the Falls Church Education Foundation Teachers of the Year. So those will be announced later this week and we're very excited about the nominees there. And then the second session of our English classes for adult family members of FCCPS students starts tonight at Thomas Jefferson. And those are beginning level classes on Tuesdays and intermediate's are on Thursdays. So we are providing through the Ed Foundation and the like, some of those ESOL classes for our, for our folks.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan. Can move on to Section 1201, Board and Student Liaison Comments. We start with you, Mr. Webb?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to take a moment to say it has been a pleasure over the last two years to serve as chair. I think during the two years of being chair, we as a board accomplished a lot of things with the most important being the hiring of a new superintendent. I want to thank Mr. Redinger for his leadership during this time as board chair, as board vice chair. I think we took on the leadership of a board that was kind of bumping along the way and, and kind of got it, things together that has been a, thankfully, quiet for the most part, a couple of years. I wish that you and Mr. Anderson the best. I know the leadership of the board is in capable hands. Ms. Gill, with having been on the board now going into her fourth year, Mr. Anderson has done yeoman's work while he was running as well as going to city council meetings on Monday nights, then coming to our meetings. I told him once, I'm like, God bless you because it's a, you're doing great things because I don't want to sit over there every Monday night for the, because we're typically done by right around this time and they can potentially go into overtime many evenings, as we know during our joint meetings with them. So, Mr. Anderson, God bless you for all that you do and, and being, and keeping us, look, so that they don't kind of slip anything by us because you're there to hear it all. But again, I want to just say thank you to the staff. Dr. Noonan, it has, you have made my two years of being the board chair very easy. And I look forward to the leadership of our new board chair and vice chair. Thank you.
Ms. Russell? Mr. Redinger?
I'll just briefly thank Lawrence as well and the whole board for the confidence you've shown in me for the past couple of years. I greatly enjoyed it. I am very pleased to return to my old role of a thorn in the side of the board chair and vice chair. So I'm looking forward to that. I do have only one regret from the two years though, and that is during the entire time we were not able to schedule a report on the vocal stylings of Peter Noonan.
Future agenda item.
I will, I will let every opportunity during the, the, the next year be raising that opportunity because I think it really needs to happen. Or perhaps a role in the musical for George Mason.
Ms. Lynn?
I, I'll just mention that Mr. Webb and I will be going down to Richmond at the beginning of next week for the, the SBA Legislative Conference. So we will report back on, next Tuesday on how that went.
Mr. Castillo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, there was the coordinating council meeting last week. And I, I, for, for anybody who, who is out there listening, I think we have a lot of work to do. I'm hopeful that we'll be able to work closely with the city manager and the city council. I, I do have some serious concerns about how some of the things are shaking out, especially the parking garage. And I hope that we can all work cooperatively together to get to a place that, that meets the needs of the school division. I think one of the things that occurred to me is if, if this parking garage can be built, you know, just as with the water fund money that was invested to the pension plan, I think this additional money could serve a similar purpose for the school division. I think we should explore that. We don't have as much time as we think, so I'm very hopeful that we'll be able to work together with the general government. I, I do say that I think we have a lot of work to do and I have some concerns. And so I'm hopeful that we'll, we'll continue to make progress there. I would like to thank Mr. Webb for, for his service. I think he did a, a very good job as a chair of the board for the past couple of years. And I appreciate the time and commitment and the good cheer that he brought to that. And I don't, between moving to GW and not being chair, I don't know what he's going to do with all his spare time now. Also, thank you to Mr. Redinger. Unfortunate that job demands did not make it possible to, to take your shot at being on the board as a chair. But thank you for all of your work. And I think one of the big strides the board has made over the past couple of years is, we, I think we've, we've made great strides in adhering to norms and increasing civility and working together as a group. I hope that continues. I, I also am hopeful that we'll now start to get into this rotation of chair transitioning to the vice chair and on and on. I think it's great that we have five members now on the board who are or have been in a leadership role because I think that's going to make for a much stronger board. I wish Ms. Gill and Mr. Anderson well and happy to assist in, in any way as we head into the budget season and then into the construction season for the schools and for the development. So, and, and thank you, Dr. Noonan, and, and to everyone who worked so hard to get tonight's budget, budget proposal and calendar and whatnot together. Michelle out there. It's a lot of work and obviously all this stuff comes out. It looks like it was just produced magically and I understand that it's a little more complicated than that. So thank, thank you for all you do. It's very much appreciated. And I think the hard work speaks for itself in what it generates in results.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I'll just want to say thank you again for the vote of confidence. I feel you've given me some big shoes to fill, so we'll see how that works. And I'm looking forward to, to the coming year. We've got a lot to do and I'm glad we're going to be able to do it together. In the spirit of doing things together and in the spirit of going to city council meetings, I guess I will highlight for everybody on the 21st, Councilmember, Councilmember Hardy's been working on organizing a service event for the city council. Those of us who may be able to participate, be a good thing to, to consider doing on the 21st as well. So, other than that, and I guess I, we're going to be in, in Richmond ourselves next week for the new chairs and vice chairs training session. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just say thank you to Mr. Webb, Mr. Redinger. Mr. Webb, I literally have big shoes to fill and figuratively, but you've done a really wonderful job, even Mr. Redinger, really reaching out to the community and leading the board. Thank you so much for your two years of service. And I was at the chamber this morning and Chamber of Commerce, there's not a lot to report except that the, what people may not know is the news press is having trouble coming up with money to print this week. So Mr. Benton has kind of put out an appeal to the community, just letting people know that he may not have money to print the paper this week. So it was a bit of a, something we weren't expecting to hear at that meeting, but I just wanted to throw it out there as a heads up. And then the Health of Ones Committee is going forward with some more great speakers and they're going to have, I think, Stixrod, the, I don't remember his first name, but he runs the Stixrod Center in Maryland, has approached us about speaking, about how you don't have to, how you don't have to be so stressed out about going to college and you don't have to go to the best college. So it's kind of to help, they're really working on reducing anxiety for parents and students this year. And I want to thank Jamie Seabridge, who's done a great job helping us with that committee this year. Next, move on to the approval of the minutes. I would seek unanimous consent to approve the minutes of December 3rd, December 11th, and December 18th, 2018. No objections? So ordered? There are materials for board review of enrollment and there are no other comments? Take a motion to adjourn? Second? Yeah, okay, great. We are adjourned. I'm always like so tired by that. I was like, wait, do we? I know, I see a motion here, but I'm like, do we do the motion? Because I'm always like, I've been up so long.